Hey everybody, how are you doing? And uh, thanks for joining me. It was a great new announcement that I'm gonna get right to and then we can have at it and hash out the details and everything else. It is approximately twelve oh three, ooh, twelve oh three tonight. And on the east and wherever you are, it's undoubtedly earlier, what am I trying to say? It's uh, it is. You're behind me time wise. Hey Barry Lee is here, my gosh. Barry Lee, how are you? How are you Barry Lee? How are things going? Barry, how's work going? So we've got Barry here. Um, and Barry, it's nice to see that you're good. So without, hey, I'm, looks like we're having people come on in here. Come on in and say hello. Hey Raider Lou, how are you? Raiders, Raiders Bengals and guess what? I'm gonna be there. Yes, I'm coming back to Oakland. Hey, work is busy uh, for a short spell. I gotta get my mail, but I'm gonna. Hey, how you doing Angel? Hey, how are you John? How are you doing? And yes, I'm returning. I'll be at the Raiders Bengals game. And I'll be there early actually. So who's going to be at the Raiders Bengals game by the way, other than me? I'm going, who else? Some of you are in other parts of the nation. Of course, so am I right now. I'm not in Oakland. Angel, Angel, you're gonna be there. I'll be at the West Side Club. Having an early meal if I can get a table. I'm gonna get there in early so and get a table so um, very least is do I think this will be my final time there? Uh, don't know. You mean final time in terms of what? I'm not hmm, I kind of, I don't understand that. You mean personally or? I don't understand that. Oh, you'll be there Raider Lou. Hey, so okay, tell you what. Folks, hey, how you doing? I will be at the West Side Club starting the second quarter. I'm gonna get a table and stop on by and say hi. If you wanna be on video, I'd love to have you and interview you and find out what your thoughts are or just get to know you. You know, face, face wise and all that and as they say, enjoy the Raiders contest. So I'll be there. I think um, yeah, the West Side Club is probably the best place to meet where I usually, I know that's a very broad thing to say. I'll be in the West Side Club, but my objective will be to get. If I can't get one of the window tables down there, uh, then I'll get one of the four tables up closer to the walkway that goes past the bar area. So that as you walk by, you can't miss me. So I, where I'm gonna be exactly is difficult to say because that depends on, you know, traffic and everything else, but I'm going to endeavor to do that and I'm, then I'm gonna uh, take a photograph and say, hey, here I am and put it out there. But uh, you, you all know what I look like. So let's see, is there any update in the Raiders twenty twenty lease negotiations? Um, dang it. Shooze, I should have asked about that. I was so busy talking about the A's and preparing for this. Uh, but I will find out tomorrow if there has been any movement uh, on that, in that regard. Um, sometimes it's difficult to get com- get information. I was so focused on getting ready for the A's matter that that didn't um, come into the conversation. And um, I'll rectify that. I can rectify that very quickly. Okay, so, so there. But the answer is I haven't, I wasn't told anything tonight. I can't say who I talked to. Uh, I can say it's a high official, how's that? But uh, but that's that, alright? So and even then, well, look, I'll ask, I'll find out, I'll find out. My mom is great Barry Lee, thank you for asking. And thank you very for asking. She's uh, downstairs um, getting ready for bed. Uh, if she hasn't gone already. And we were watching the Country Music Awards Show, which is a lot of fun. And it was a lot of fun to see the new faces of country music. Present themselves and sing their, you know, what's off. Uh, I particularly enjoy Carrie Underwood. I'm sorry Carrie Underwood didn't win, but Garth Brooks won. Uh, terrific entertainer, you know? But Carrie Underwood, woo. Wow, okay. Um, and so John Akala says, I'm hearing that a seventeen game NFL regular season is possible. How do you think that would work? Would all teams play one game at a neutral site location? John Akala, that's a good question. Uh, and I'll get to that one. Raider Lou asked me about the twenty twenty, which I, I got to you. I got, you know, I responded to. Barry, I still don't understand about the whole final time thing, but let me go forward now that there are a healthy one of you, if anybody's on Twitter, hey Barry Lee, can you do me a favor and retweet this? On Twitter, if you haven't seen this already, I will um, you know, what I'll do is I'll share it on Twitter out. Where you can get at it. And um, and go from there. So uh, yeah, you'll be right back. Oh shoot, anyway, um, here, uh, I'm just doing hashtag Barry Lee. Yeah, barely. Okay, so I just tagged you Barry. I'm trying to, yeah, you're max my dog forty-four. I just tagged you so you can retweet that. Thank you very much. Alright, so now that I have about uh, oh, okay, I got you. Now that uh, you all are here. Um, gee, how you doing? And I owe you an email. I keep saying that as like ah. Alright, here's the announcement folks. The Oakland City Council has dropped the Coliseum lawsuit in fine fashion. And the statement is that statement from, and I'll show you what the statement reads. Okay, uh, this one. Excuse me there. Bam, okay. Statement from Oakland Mayor Libby Shaft, Council President Rebecca Kaplan and Vice Mayor Larry Reed, Oakland, California. Tonight, the city council directed the city attorney to immediately drop Oakland's lawsuit against Alameda County re the sale of the Coliseum. Additionally, the council directed the issuance of a surplus land notice on the Coliseum site illegally required precursor to selling public land. We're dropping the suit because we're pleased with our recent discussions with the A's and our shared interests in Oakland's future. We're excited to enter into this next phase of negotiations with the A's to ensure they remain rooted in Oakland. There you go. So that, that's a red letter a day and it encapsulated within that is this. First of all, uh, Barbara Parker, our Oakland city manager is pissed off. This action was done over her strong objections. Okay, and I can't tell you who told me that. I'm just telling you. The action was done over her strong objections. And this is not the first time that Barbara has sort of gotten in the way of advancing our sports interests. And I can't think of any other way to put it. Except that's that, the way I put it reflects the tone of other people who are at the table with her, who basically object that she and they don't know why uh, so strongly reacted to the A's. Barbara overall has not been kind to sports uh, in our city. Um, she, and I just have to say this straight out because this is what happened. She came to game for the N double, the NC, excuse me, the NBA finals where the Warriors played the Raptors. And she was in the Coliseum joint powers authority box with myself, Chris Dobbins and Scott McKibben, who is the executive director. Uh, so it was clear, hey Chee, uh, it was clear where she got, she wants a strategy thoughts on Oakland versus Raiders versus Bengals. I'll get to that in a second. It was clear where she got her ticket from, but then, you know, she turns around after Ring Central contacts her office and says, hey, McKibben wants this fee for his work in engineering this naming rights deal. Are we supposed to pay this to you? And she basically goes, turns around and engineers a situation including accusing him of what's called double dealing on a matter that the board was fully aware of. To the extent of the board saying, hey, Scott, you go out and you get this deal with Ring Central. So basically Scott was already an independent consultant was acting in a way he thought an independent consultant should or could. Whereas he gets a fee, okay? And I'm hedging like that because look, look. He didn't know the law. And there's, there are two case items that protect sort of the ignorance of knowing the law. And they're on the books as saying to us, hey, you know what? He, that person didn't know, so it's okay. And the board instructed Scott to go ahead. It's not like he engineered this deal by himself. Okay, he had enablers, alright? So anyway, I, I probably explained that a bit longer than I should, but the whole point is that uh, Barbara was the one who drove that. And I'm thinking, you know, if you are like John Russo, who was our previous city attorney and they're both friends of mine. Okay, but this is professional. Uh, if you were like Russo, you would have said, you know what? Uh, hey, I've got, you would have called him first of all and handled everything back channel. You wouldn't have made this public thing about it and tried to embarrass Scott, who's done a great deal for the Coliseum and the Coliseum joint powers authority. And now with the Oakland Panthers indoor football league team is the only person, the only game in town, if you will, that's really trying to bring a game in town. Right? So Scott is to be knighted as far as I'm concerned. I said it before, I'll say it again, he should be knighted. Um, so Barbara has once again s- s- tried to stand in the way, but kudos to the negotiating chops of A's president Dave Caval, who I am told uh, was very amenable. The talks are very, very, very amicable. No meaning, no mean stuff at all, if you will, because everybody wants to move ahead. The city, and I think this is the most important thing because Rebecca Kaplan signed her name to this. And it was Rebecca that really started this, okay? Rebecca Kaplan is the Oakland at large council member of the city is eager to do something. And the city is also aware that there's a long way to go. There's a long way from here to there. There is the accomplishment of the completion of this beautiful ballpark at Howard Terminal along with whatever transpires at Coliseum, at the Oakland Coliseum. My personal concern was that, and a lot of people understood this, uh, and have said some very kind things to me uh, regarding my points and the work that I did, which I appreciate. Uh, but and I, when I say where my work, I wasn't hired by anybody. It's something that I did as part of what I do in terms of vlogging about this sort of thing. Because they're only handful of people that around the world, it would seem that understand taxing and financing and I'm one of them. Because I came literally out of the, my career womb doing this sort of thing. Anyway, enough about me and went back to the A's. Um, they are now able to move forward. And I think there were, let me take that, I think out of my sentence, there is a mutual comfort that the issues that are outstanding are, can be overcome now. And that, that can move forward. Uh, and in unison, and that's a big deal. I mean, think about it. When was the last time you heard that with respect to the city of Oakland and its sports? I can tell you the last time I heard it uh, in the, the overall scheme of things. And that was when the Warriors were negotiating to have what we still call, even though it's not called Oracle Arena rebuilt. And it was all in retrospect, really smooth. The A's went down to San Jose for a couple of years. The crowds down there are going so well that people speculated the Warriors just might stay down there. But the whole point is the, that was the way the media were supporting it, but the reading of media doesn't understand contracts. In other words, a contract says, hey, you are down there. Then after two years, two seasons, you come back here and you start. And that's precisely what the Warriors did, okay? So um, Angel, is it Angel or Angel? And Jack Bauer uh, says, what about lawsuit versus Raiders? Did they drop that? No. The lawsuit for this is Raiders, this is where that is. They have been in um, a place where they're trading documents, okay? And there's a scheduled document trade. And when I say trade is I submit my counter ar- argument as plaintiff. And the plaintiff is the city of Oakland. The defendant, the Raiders submits their counter. And then the city submits its counter to that. And the Raiders submit its counter back to that and then we're in court. That process uh, ends March twentieth. Uh, if memory serves of two thousand twenty. So uh, I believe it was in March sixth of two thousand twenty, but it's March of two thousand twenty. They decide. Uh, Cowboy wrestler says, I didn't know the Warriors played at Sappan, San Jose. I thought it was the Palace in San Francisco. No, not at all. No way, it was never that. It was San Jose. And um, it was not the, not the Palace in San Francisco, it was San Jose. Uh, and again, there was thought that, oh hey, maybe uh, they'll stay down there. And I have to say, I have to say, I remember after that experience, thinking that San Jose really does deserve its own NBA team. I've said it before, I'll say it again. There's enough room in the Bay Area for another NBA team. We have two major league baseball teams. We have two NFL football teams. Why not have an NBA team? In fact, why not have an NBA team in Oakland? And that team could take on the Warriors. I think that would be a fantastic draw. And in this emerging era of sports gambling uh, and gaming, though that rivalry would be oh so popular. So yeah, uh, so Barry Lee says, I think it's called discovery phase. Um, that's, they're not, no, they're not in the discovery phase yet. Nowhere near that Barry. Because the trial date, when I say exchanging documents, where where we are is evaluating a motion to dismiss. And the media, which the media reported as if the deal was dead or the rest of the media, as if the deal was dead. And it wasn't. And it was simply prolonged. So we've basically, as I've said before, the court Judge Joseph Sparrow has given the Raiders basically enough time to han, refine and improve their argument. Uh, Cowboy wrestler says, I think two NBA teams in the Bay Area would be great for the local area. I'm getting to your uh, dingch, haven't forgot about you. It's right, right in my face. Um, James Clinton says, bring back the Oakland Oaks basketball team. I like it. Barry Lee says, okay, now I know, learned something new. Yeah, so anyway, okay. Strategy thoughts on Oakland Raiders versus Bengals? I'll say this, okay? It's going to be a better game than it should be because the, you know, the Bengals, if you take a look at the Raiders as they were last week, the Bengals should strafe them through the air. Okay, it should be a kind of game where the Bengals quarterbacks, and I say plural because I have a feeling Andy Dalton's gonna see some action here. But, and that's just a feeling, okay? But the Bengals quarterbacks could come out of this with four hundred yards passing. And it's not any slap against the Raiders in a sense. But it is a recognition of the fact that the Raiders' style of defense has been susceptible to the long passing game and the quick strike passing game that can hit your defensive center, your defensive backfield uh, before they get set because, alright? So is it a trap game? Yeah, Cowboy wrestler, I think it's very much a trap game. But what, what stops it from being a perfect trap game is the Raiders need to win to get over five hundred. I mean, that Sunday is gonna be ballistic because uh, if the Chiefs, right? Uh, that Sunday is gonna be ballistic, okay? I mean, it just is, uh, it, it's gonna be raucous. It's gonna be rolling. And I think that'll carry the Raiders. Hey Juan Ramirez, how you doing? I think that'll carry the Raiders. But strategically, yeah, the Raiders' only recourse is an exotic overload blitz. I think from not, not from, from the passing side, okay? And I say that in that way because like this, because the Raiders are not known for overload blitzing. I would go back to the type of overload blitz that was presented by Buddy Ryan's forty-six defense of the day. In fact, um, you know, as I think about it, the forty-six just might be the perfect defense to employ here. And you would say, what's the forty-six? Okay. Here's the center, alright? Right here, okay? You've got center, guard, guard. Oh, this is perfect, alright? This is the offensive line, okay? The forty-six puts a nose tackle, a, your defensive end over here, okay? And then your defensive tackle over here. And then your defensive end over here with two linebackers over here. Or you can flip it around, you can have the defensive end o- out here. Okay, and then defensive tackle here, nose here, defensive end here over the guard, linebacker here over the tackle and then the other linebacker over here over the tight end. Or you have them really shift them so that both the linebackers are to either side of the tight end in the gap out here. Then you have the middle linebacker up here, alright? And then you got the outside linebacker, well, you have two linebackers here. So you have a rover here. So you have an eight man front, okay? An eight man front, that's a forty-six. And the last team to really effectively present that actually was the uh, the Arizona Cardinals did against the Buccaneers last week. They use, they use flash of those fat for the first time. I thought, oh, they're using a forty-six front. Front. That front is devastating. It's not used anywhere near enough considering the type of passing game that it goes up against or would go up against it if we use, if used. Um, so I would, I would definitely, definitely uh, you know, really definitely uh, look out for that. But also in terms of what, what could be done. So um, let me go on with your other question because I saw that one. Timothy Ferrer says, the Raiders are five and four looking into the playoffs. We need the Steelers to lose to get the sixth seed. Yeah, that's tomorrow night. James Clinton says, I think it's a great day that the A's want to stay in Oakland and build their showplace and put it on display for the rest of the world to see. I do too. It's a, it's great to finally get over the hump of thinking that a team doesn't once again wanna be with us. And they do. And they do. You know, my, my, I wasn't again, I wasn't, my only issue was tearing down the stadium. Okay, again, I've said that before, I'll say it again. It's like, why do that? This is fantastic shrine to human energy. You've, you understand if you watch this regularly, how I feel about it. Uh, Jordan Yancey says, uh, Gordon State looks bad. Lakers are doing a job to them. Oh, let's see what that is. Um, that is, I, I was like, oh no, I can't watch. Oh no, I can't watch. Um, hold on a second. Don't wanna watch. Golden State Warriors. I don't wanna watch, I don't wanna watch. No, no. Uh, oh shoot. Ee, look at this folks, this is ugly. Oh my lord, look at that. Bam, ninety to one sixteen. I mean, this started off bad and just got worse. See? It started off with Lakers up first quarter by twelve. Warriors matched them point wise in the second quarter. Their quarter, Lakers were just slightly ahead in the fourth quarter. Ya'uzah. They ate to eighteen. I mean, as Cowboy wrestler said, the good lord, the Warriors are terrible. Yeah. And the Warriors are two wins and nine losses. That's bad. The Lakers are almost the opposite. Well, they're about to be nine and went nine and two. Well, no, they wouldn't be because then if they were nine and two, the Warriors would be um, uh, two and ten. That's horrible. I mean, that is horrible. No, it's wow. The lost season of the Golden State Warriors, that the lost season of the Golden State Warriors in San Francisco. And Anthony Davis didn't play. Ah. Jordan Yancey says, Anthony Davis didn't even play. LeBron James hasn't played in the fourth quarter. Jack Bauer says Warriors will be back next year. Uh, I have my doubts. I really have my doubts because see, the Warriors had that one big run because they were doing something that nobody else in the league was doing. And it's the old saw now of does somebody have what you do on tape? And if they don't and you do it well, you can win. And the Warriors did that. I mean, the Warriors were, were, had changed the definition of manhood in basketball. Manhood in basketball was, hey, uh, go down into the rim, prove you're tough, slam the ball home. Outside shots, three pointers? Oh no, man, that's sissy stuff, no way, okay? Means you're afraid to, you know, have contact. But the Warrior said, look, we only think in terms of math. If I shoot a three, I get three, not two. If I keep shooting threes, even if my percentage is bad, right? I get three and not two. But then what if my percentage is good? Then those three start to add up. And in two thousand, in two thousand fifteen, that's precisely what happened. Okay, two thousand fourteen going into two thousand fifteen, that's precisely what happened. The Warriors started off the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen NBA season on a seventeen and oh run. Remember that? Seventeen and oh run, okay? Cowboy wrestler said, ask, what do you think about the Astros cheating scandal? Possibly bidding, biggest cheating story in sports since Deflate Gate. You know, I need to look more at it before I can render a comment. Uh, but my, but off the top, I would have to say that you know, we're in a society that encourages lying. And in a lot of ways, I mean, think about it. Think about some of the most horrible disasters in modern society. I think of the challenger. Remember the company Morton Diacall and the O-rings and how no one was able to really tell the other person, oh, if these O-rings are exposed to freezing temperatures or super freezing temperatures in space, they're going to get brittle and they're gonna start a chain reaction that leads to the explosion. Oh, the space shuttle. And yet, and, and that's what happened. And then when Dr. Richard Fainman figured it out, look at what was done to try to discredit him. But he was right, okay? I, I'm, the, the society really prizes showing up this shiny object and saying, hey, look at over here, it's a shiny object. But then the truth is really over there. Or look at the Raiders in Las Vegas stadium and how you don't have a consistent weekly reporting portal on the web so that everybody knows without guessing where the stadium is. Good and bad, okay? There's always some attempt at deception. And in a social media environment, it's easier to catch that deception and do something about it or at least have the, or say to the system, hey, do something about this, okay? Do something about it. So anyway, um, let me get back to your comments. Uh, Cowboy wrestler says, Chase Center would, might be nice, but it will never have the energy and passion of Oracle. True. Raider Lou says, that's what they get from moving to San Francisco. Raider Lou speaks the truth. Jack Bauer says, great point, the league has kind of figured them out. Yeah, that's the problem, that's it. And not only has uh, the league figured them out, Jack Bauer. And not only has uh, the league figured them out, Jack Bauer, uh, that the league has has basically. Taken what the Warriors do best and made it um, standard fare, okay? The Warriors are not the most three-shootingest team in the NBA. And they haven't been for a while, the Warriors turned around and when they realized, hey, everybody's catching up to their our game. Then they brought in Kevin Durant and then they brought in what they should have done, it was brought in LeBron James, but. Think the Warriors, I think Damian Lillard called it, the Warriors went on a money grab. And probably got a little bit too big for their organizational britches. And they met, they signed a lot of super max contracts. Uh, paid a lot of play- players, a lot of lot, but but most important. The Warriors for all of their analytical acumen failed to do one thing. They failed to create a mathematical model. That allowed the installation. Of any team out there that they were considering in the draft. And then say, okay, how can we come up with something different using these players that are unknown and be effective? And what are we giving up if we let these other players go? And then the Warriors, and I I contend the Warriors did this on purpose, I've said this before and I'll say it again. The Warriors used Kevin Durant like he was a pack mule. And they made it so that he was less valuable to the next team that got him. Because he was on the way out, it's like they made a decision, like they said, okay, you know what? We're gonna put ourselves in the position, and and I, the reason why I say this is because the Warriors. Don't do anything without calculating it out first, so I don't believe at all. But this just happened to them, I think they planned it. Because they figured, look, we can either let him go and we're not gonna have to deal with him someplace else, or if we do, he's going to be. Severely depleted, so let's get the best out of him now in this situation. And if he, if it comes, if he comes back, we're lucky. That's exactly how they handled it. And they failed to adjust their game plan for what other teams are doing. But they used Kevin Durant and it came back to bite them. And it wasn't a good look, and then on top of all that, folks. From a free agent standpoint, in terms of where people wanted to put to to play. The Warriors taking the team or themselves out of Oakland and going to San Francisco. And then just and then during that process immediately, the whole Kyle Lowry mess. Sent a message to a lot of black folks, whether the Warriors intended it or not, this is the message that was sent, hey. We don't like Oakland because it's black, we don't like you because you're black, we wanna go where. We can make more money where it's white and tech and we're happier over there, that's the message that the Warriors sent. That's the way a lot of black folks look at it, that's just, as they say in in the movie Stripes, that's the fact, Jack. Um, so. Fifty-two says, does this mean it's over or should I still be worried, you mean in terms of the A's? Don't worry, it's good, it's good, we's good, we's good, um, and. Jack Bowers says, no biggie, they are still all signs, yep, and uh, Cowboy Wrestler writes. The thing about the Warriors that is that. They moved to San Francisco to cater to Silicon Valley. Crowd, but at the same time abandoning their working class fan base in Oakland, shame, yeah, it is a shame, because. You don't turn away from authentic fans, and that's what the Warriors did. Priced them out, took them out of their area. And they brought them over to a crowd that's in best indifferent, okay? And that, and what's 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 most dangerous? About the scenario the Warriors have established for themselves right now as an organization. Is you have a subpar product playing basketball right now. As you and I speak, okay, it's now ninety-four to one twenty and that's the final, okay, that's the ending, so basically, um. The Warriors uh, lost by what, twenty-four points? And uh, ninety-four to one, uh, twenty-six points, excuse me, ninety-four to one twenty, you have, you're putting a subpar product. Out there that as I talk to you right now has a two and ten, a two-win, ten-loss record, who'd have thunk? That anybody would associate the Warriors with a two-win-ten-loss record. But here we are, okay, so you're taking. The Warriors. Again, to repeat myself, you're putting a subpar product on the court. You're asking fans to spend mucho dollars, mucho dollars on boxes. And now there's no guarantee when they're gonna get better and yet you're banking on the idea that this version of Warrior fan. Is going to stick with the team the same way that. The Oakland version did, but there's a difference. S- the difference is encapsulated by a structure that consists of in Oakland, lower price, right? And then winning, the team was winning. Okay, the team was winning, okay? So, as Cowboy Wrestler just wrote, it doesn't matter, the Warriors got their money. From those three championships that were won in Oakland, right? But the question is, are they gonna now blow that money by not by just saying, hey, we've got our sponsorship dollars and our. TV dollars and it doesn't matter, we're good to go, doesn't matter what happens on the court? Yeah, I'm 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 dying in a sense, I'm not dying, but I'm quite anxious to see. How this scenario plays out, because if the Warriors. Would I, if the Warriors, if what happens to the Warriors matches what I believe in my crystal ball is going to happen. They're going to regret their action, and the reason is that. You're gonna be thought of as this this organization that has this high dollar. Venue, high dollar offering, but at the end of the day. The game just isn't very good. And the only time you're gonna get people to see you is when the other team comes in to beat your team, and that's it, and that's eh, at best. That's fine, they'll carry you through the the first half of the season, but the last half of the season, you'll be a laughing stock. Okay? There'll be a laughing stock and and on top of that. What they came up with in terms of that Harlem Globetrotter style shooting the three offense. Was the happy accident of. Out of the box thinking and timing. But what we see since then is one fact, the Warriors do not have. A, an analytical system where they're back there saying, alright, um. What's the next innovation we can figure out and install, otherwise, had they thought that way, they would have done it. I'm not saying they don't have analysts, they do, in fact, you realize the Oakland Panthers have nine, yeah, nine anal. They have nine analysts on their staff, the Oakland Panthers football staff is basically half analysts. And I'm talking about out of like twenty-one, twenty people, almost twen- eighteen people, like half analysts. That was wild, man, I I went through. The website for a live, for a video blog I did on them earlier. And I was floored, hey, welcome to Zinni sixty-two, everybody, um, so. She, I think, asked me to give an analysis about the Mingles I did. Uh, Jack Bauer says, how is Mandalorian, is Boba Fett the Mandalorian, I'm confused on the timeline, I only bought. That's a, I only bought. Disney Plus thirty minutes, well, an hour ago before I started, so it looked good. But I think Jessica Dwyer is the the person who's far ahead of me, and she's our Zinni sixty-two resident, you know, VIP. Pop culture and Comic-Con experts, so I would, you know, throw a question her way, uh, um, just go to, just type her name. And then go to her. Her author page, her email should be attached there, I'll make sure that it is, in fact, let me see that it is. So, uh, let's see here, Oakland News Now, I'll wait for that, and then, uh. Mario says, you're tripping, Warriors are going to be fine, no, they're not, those tickets were not cheap in Oakland. We've better experience as I've been twice, five stars. Whoa, those fighting words, man, heck with you, you're wrong, dude, wrong, they're not, the Warriors are not gonna be fine, why are the Warriors gonna be fine, okay? Tell me, why are the Warriors gonna be fine, they just got hammered, they suck, man, they're two and ten. You wanna spend your money on a subpar product like that? Come on, dude, they're better off in Oakland. It's what you're talking about, look at the, look at the record. The Warriors had become synonymous with winning. The Warriors are are going down the tubes like a piss-poor South American country. That's a line from Wall Street, by the way, anyway, um. Okay, I'm sorry, man, I'm just not, I'm not feeling it, I'm not feeling the Warriors. I'm not feeling the Warriors. The Warriors are giants, I'm not following you. I am way not following you, um, loose and they still come, I I'm still. And Joseph Amendares is here, Joseph, how you doing? Joseph, uh, oh, Jack Bauer says Clippers should move back to San Diego or go to Vegas, the Clippers. Are just fine where they're at, they're building a state-of-the-art new arena, the Clippers are not the Chargers, alright? John Akala says, any scenario you see Warriors moving back to Oakland, hell no. Nope, uh-uh, they are, they gone, man, no, because, look, you own the facility. I mean, let's just straight up deal with what happened here, hey, everybody, welcome to Zinni sixty-two, the Warriors. And by the way, if you're just joining us and you wanna hear about the A's, uh, I'll reread to you. The Oakland City Council statement in a moment, and I will say to you also that Oakland City Turner, Oakland City Attorney Barbara Parker. Has stood in the way, I am told, um, uh, and she's not happy with this deal. This agreement between the city of Oakland, the Athletics was literally done over the head. Of the city attorney, so basically, if you can imagine the city attorney going, no, 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 that's. And I'm exaggerating, but that's not far off. From what happened, okay, she was not happy. And she was looking for like, I wanna fight, I wanna fight the A's, I wanna fight, I wanna fight, I wanna fight, you know, no, Barbara, no. No, Ms. Parker, please, no. No, 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 not at all. No, so Mario Romero says Giants losing, they still come, Jeff's up Giants full house even when they're not doing well, those are the Giants. The Giants say nothing for the Warriors in this new scen- scenario, okay? Just not seeing it, alright, um, Elgin says, who thinks the Raiders can make the playoffs this year? I said so at the start of the season, I said wildcard at least, this Sunday game. Suck me up to look like something special, alright? It really is, Joseph Emenduris says, hi, everyone, curious, do both Panthers teams resolve the two Oakland Panther issues? I haven't heard that they have, the Oakland Panthers, I haven't gotten an email from the other Panthers, what Joseph is talking about. Is the threat of a lawsuit from the Oakland Panthers conventional football team that was being planned. Against the indoor football team version, I have long been a proponent of the two fusing as together as one. Where that is, I don't know, but my guess is it's not any further than it was a few months ago, uh, look. The the simple fact of the matter is indoor football league is less capital intensive, in other words, it takes less money to establish. Than the outdoor version, um, the outdoor version requires the use of a giant stadium, which calls. For it, the concomitant costs regarding insurance and security that, um. A- and maintenance that can choke a team if it's not financially prepared to cope with those issues. Whereas you have a contained environment indoor, you have fewer players. And so the the revenue cost structure looks a lot better for indoor indoor. The league than than the outdoor for for startup, now, you might say, well, gee, how come? The indoor football league didn't, you know, survive, and look, at some point, you've got to have enough capital. To sustain yourself over a multi-game year period, eh, if you are in different arenas, that that's just true. And, um. I haven't, in in fairness, I haven't looked at the arena football leagues layout structure, but. But if it was, if it was done anywhere like. The, um, when Magic Jack was around for s- major league soccer, that major league soccer. League where all the different teams in the league were free agents and they could spin as they wanted to and. One could wildly spin because they had more than the other, that's a recipe for disaster. And that is why the NFL model has endured for so long, you have one dollar, you've equally divided among all the teams regardless of where the dollar comes from. Okay, so, um. Riot Abbott says Philly is Connie Mack, the A's moved to Oakland for a reason. She says, uh, happy for LeBron, Warriors ganged up on him in Cleveland after the seventy-three and nine year. Good to see him get revenge, this you call this revenge, come on, man, this is not revenge. These are not the Warriors, these aren't the Warriors my mom knows, okay, these are. A mere imitation of the real deal, these are not the Warriors, I'm sorry, they are not the Warriors. Uh, they are a kitty cop team, these are not the Golden State Warriors, so I would. Not, eh, I would not at all use this as some sort of. Oh, it's so great for LeBron and, oh, forget it, great, huh, are you kidding me? So, um, no way. In Cowboy Rush, so I think the Raiders and the Steelers getting into the wild as the wild cards. Uh, change my tune on the Raiders, um, hm, Elgin Jackson. Says, would a, will a computer firm take over the Coliseum after the Raiders and the A's leave, well. Technically, the A's have, and they're not a computer, you know, team, uh, but why a computer team? Just curious, are you thinking about something that Dem Cal said during the Raiders rally? Before the Las Vegas folk? Hennessy, how you doing, Hennessy says, will the A's be gone in the next three years, no, the A's will be here. The A's are not going anywhere, and you can thank the Oakland City Council and the mayor for that, um. And you can not thank the Oakland City Attorney who was standing in the way, had it been up to Barbara Parker. The lawsuit would have remained, the. Rancor would have remained because he, what Barbara wanted to do, was she actually wanted to drop the lawsuit. But she wanted to do it with prejudice, and what that means is, hey, look, I have the right to come back and sue you. If things don't go the way I want them to go, and the A's were like, well, hey, wait a minute. You're not putting this, you're not putting us. In the proper place. So we have this, um, this is what was being set up, have a sword of Damocles hanging over their head all the time, wondering if, boom, you know. The city was gonna drop another lawsuit on them. That's not good. And it's not good for Barbara to put the city in that position vis a vis sports organizations. Barbara stood in the way during the Raiders negotiations, she stood in the way with respect to the Raiders lease. I have had high-level people tell me that, and when I say she, I mean the organization, not, I'm not saying Barbara personally per se. But her way sets the tone for the Oakland City Attorney's Office, she won the election, there was nobody running against her. Okay, some of you out there who have legal chops and some political experience might want to decide to run for office next time. But she was the only game in town, no one ran against her. No one ran against Barbara Parker for arguably one of the most important. Political seats in Oakland, now. Isn't that the epitome of being stuck on stupid in terms of structure and what it does, I say, yeah, it is. It really is. Sorry, I'm missing your commentary, um. Hennessy says, so do you think we still get a new stadium? Yes. Uh, Joseph Amendares says, saw earlier today an interview with Deion Jordan going to the Raiders, said he was impressed by the character and grit of the team. Uh, which he feels, uh, for, fits his personality to a team. I agree. Rob Ivan says, I'm glad to see good faith negotiations between the A's and the city council. I completely agree, Rob Ivan, and great to see you tonight. She says, uh. Back on Raiders Bengals, Raiders are a offensive team. What's the offensive strategy? In my opinion? Uh, Derek Carr passing or Josh Jacobs running formations. I think, I think it should be. A sixty forty, and I say that. Because the Bengals defense is not, you know, up there by any means. Actually, it's down there. So what you wanna do is, you know, crank up that diesel that's Josh Jacobs in your ball control. But I would say misdirection running and I would, I would aim for an objective. Of one hundred and seventy yards on the ground with Jacobs, which means I have to give him the ball twenty-six times. So twenty-six rushes for one hundred and seventy yards and two touchdowns. That should be my objective. And then I base for my, for my passing game, so I wanna give him, I wanna give him the rock twenty-six times. So that means I wanna throw between sixteen and twenty times. Uh, and what I'm, what I'm looking to do. Is establish ball control, but with respect to him. You know what I really favor that the Raiders don't do, but I would do with Josh Jacobs? The sprint draw and the Seahawks popularized a strip sprint draw way back in the seventies on the Chuck Knox. And it was this beautifully designed play out of I formation, which was a, started off as a, here's the I. And here's Jim Zorn and I forgot the thirty-two, the running back, but they would start off. And Zorn would, the tackle is here, and he would fake to the halfback just on a line. About six yards. Behind the line of scrimmage where the tackle is, the tackle is blocking. The, the, the pass pocket, pocket forms in this direction. But if it's a draw, it wasn't a read option, it was a draw, you hand off. And the running back could either go here. Forward, right, or cut back. The Seahawks routinely hurt the Raiders with that when they played, uh, preseason, uh, and in regular season too, but. Off that, the Seahawks ran deep patterns. They would run a deep out pattern with Steve Largent, go up seventeen yards and then out. That play would be both doable and devastating. Doable because the play action and the role gives Derek Carr time to throw. And you, you're faking the Jacobs. Who should be taught to cut back, okay? So, um. But then pushing the ball deep with your, the wide receivers and having them come off, come off and then having the fullback out in the flat. Oh, devastating, devastating. But if you. Produce that kind of confusing, is Jacobs gonna get it on a run, or are they gonna play action? Combination against the Bengals, it's gonna be a long day for them. They would then have to, just to, for no other reason than to shorten the game time, right? To, to, to stop the clock from moving, from moving when you're running. They would have to definitely go to the air. And play right in the Raiders' hands if the Raiders decided to play a forty-six, you know, um. And, and really. Crush their pass pocket in that, that offense. That Rams offense, which I'm not sold on anymore. Because the, the Patriots gave us the blueprint for beating it, which is basically a seventies defense, which, if you think about it, is what I've described to you to a degree. Okay, it is one fifty-seven, no, it's fifty-seven. Twelve fifty-seven, I'm gonna sign off early, uh, about ten minutes. Um, at any rate, um, Chi says, I got Chi. I got Cowboy Wrestler. Reader else is running down their throat. John Akala says, why do you think the Raiders have been dressing, um. Eight men over DOS lately over, uh, during game day? I would say basically, John, it's because Kealan is still learning and. The Raiders have certain hand signals and option routes that they have to use. And so if DOS hasn't picked up all of that in the flow of a game. It means that Gruden's not willing to throw him out there. And have him learn on the fly as good as he is. You know, there's some plays you wanna put a person into because you know you're not. You, you're not giving them, you're giving them a luxury of not thinking, but there are a number of plays in the Raiders' system. Where receiver doesn't have that luxury, okay? You have to understand when to be able to adjust your pattern. And also, and I think. What may very well be more to the problem set is DOS. As well as a number of receivers have to know what the play and the pattern is for different positions. Sometimes you can forget. So I'm gonna speculate that may be the reason. That would make a lot of sense, um, and so, uh. Mario says, see if you talk more positively about the Raiders. I don't know what you're talking about, Mario. Um, and so Eric says, Mario says Jacob could reach one thousand yards in this game. Uh, Eric says, you're right, Zen. This ain't the Warriors. It's truly a D-league, but I believe when Steph Clay comes back, Warriors running it over. Uh, we'll see, okay? Because when they come back. They're older. It's kinda, it, 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 I hate to say that, but look, you have to structure for transition. Alright, thank you, John. And Eric says, what do you think about cap workout Saturday with the NFL? I think it's a possible trap. I think it's a trap situation for Colin because you got. All these GMs out there and all these people with other things to do in their schedule and then all of a sudden bam! You're gonna throw this tryout in the middle of the season? And I don't think no one's gonna show up. Someone will be there, but in fact, I was thinking, golly, I'm. I gotta go back home and he's gonna be here, but I don't even know it's, if then, I have to check on some things, but, but. Cause I would love to have somebody there for Zenni sixty-two. But, um, my point is that. He feels like a setup. It's a trap. Listen, ML Akbar, it's a trap. I should put that on as a, as a meme for Colin. It's a trap. It's a trap, alright? But. If the NFL is doing this, it, it is to say, say, you know what? Play the man. Come there, play the, maybe the Raiders will sign him. Wouldn't that be cool if the Raiders signed Colin Kaepernick? Wouldn't it be so necessary? I think so. Earl Jacob says, please help me understand. You're glad the city dropped the lawsuit against the A's? Yes, why? Um, why are, you say, please help you understand? I take that as, please help you understand why I'm happy the A's dropped the lawsuit? Or please help you understand why the lawsuit was dropped? Which one? I'm not, I'm confused there. Eric Paganian says, it could be a trap. Steve Smith says a cap will be a team, okay? And, uh, Eric says, I think the NFL is doing this because other teams have been asking. Okay. So again, I mean, why is this a trap? Why is this a whole thing a trap? Alright, um, oh, excuse me, not a trap. Not the Bengals, I, why is this whole thing? With the lawsuit an issue, why is it? You know, what's the deal? You wrote, Earl Jacob, you said, please help me understand. You're glad the city dropped the lawsuit against the A's, and I'm saying, well, actually it was against the county. Let's get that straight. It's, it's against the county and the A's sort of were along for the ride. But yeah, I'm glad they dropped it. And Barbara was screaming, kicking, screaming. Are you actually Barbara Parker? Just asking, um. Joseph Amendares says, I do think it's a PR stunt because he asked for the reasons you stated earlier that. The word, it'll be moved to a Tuesday, but they felt they had told them to take it here. Uh, Earl Jacob says, look at my second message. Uh, I did. Yeah, I mean, why don't you just instead of saying, look at your, look, I'm not gonna play this game, okay? If you want me to understand what you're saying, don't ask me to go back. And scroll when other people is, you know, dutifully scrolling through their questions, and there are other people who are. Who know if they want me to say, um. Okay, so Earl Jacob, what about the one billion in subsidies? That's Howard Terminal. You're mixing apples and oranges. Let me take this one another way, cause you're saying I'm not. There are a number of ways to look at this. There is a one billion dollar subsidy that can, can be getting one point four billion at Howard Terminal. Okay, my concern was the A's getting two, but being able to do what they want. Look, I didn't want them tearing down the stadium, okay? Let's just, 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 I'm just making that clear. I wanted the stadium to remain, period. I am comfortable that the city of Oakland is comfortable. That what the A's are going to do isn't what they put down in the plan on the website. I thought that was garbage, okay? I'm not opposed to the A's as master developer, which is, if you think about it, what they're gonna have to be anyway, fine. Okay, and yes, they're gonna have this gigantic subsidy down there. Okay, Earl says, I agree. Okay, cool, cool, alright, cool. I didn't, you know, the one thing is I'm talking, you can understand what I'm saying, but. But you're writing and, you know, it's, it's not like you're talking, you have this back and forth like it's, you know, a hangout or something, right? Which I think it should be. Anyway, Alberto Sancho, that is a cool ass name. Alberto Sancho. Alberto, love your name, man. Uh, did I pronounce it correctly? Alberto Sancho writes. Oakland is getting more expensive than the, that the average home price will pass one million in twenty twenty-five and lots of tech jobs will move to Oakland. Uh, okay, you're all, I, you know, I, I am not one. As an economic development specialist, to believe that tech is gonna be around forever as we think of it. It's a transformation. Such that the question isn't whether tech will be around, but what kind of manufacturing? Are we going to, are we migrating or, or transforming? Into more of a do it, if, do it at home business manufacturing? Okay, with all that goes with that, and if that's the case. Shouldn't we be trying to lower housing costs with the recognition? That those housing costs are really business costs? I would say the answer to that is yes. Earl says he, he wants the stadium at its current site. So does Ella Hugh. Uh, Mario, Mario says laugh out loud. He says, I've been under, in, under the tunnels. That stadium needs work bad. Um, talking about the Coliseum, uh, but I remind you of this, that Coliseum withstood the, one of the largest earthquakes in our history. And I was in the Loma Prieta earthquake. John Akala says, if A's purchase stadium and don't tear it down, what do you think they'll do with it instead? Refurbish it. You know, they should refurbish it for another pro sport, have a stake in that sport. Uh, build a sports book down there because again, hello folks, gambling is coming and it's worth billions. Don't care whether or not you believe it, I'm telling you it is, period, alright? Do some math, multi-year. And my concern is that Oakland, is it planning for this future? But it has the opportunity to do so now, okay? Alright, so there you go. Alright, folks, I, uh, again, hey, all of y'all, how many people will be at the Raiders? Game, I'll be at the West. Side club at a table. At or near window. Windows, okay? College, I'm writing this down, Coliseum. Coliseum. Okay, I'm not a big alcohol drinker, so. At all, in fact, I'll, um, if you wanna buy cran, if you wanna buy me cranberry juice, great. Serious, or coffee. Yeah, coffee would be great, uh, but. My, my, my alcohol days of, are on the way. I'm trying to keep my, keep my complexion here, you know? Alright, so, but that's what be for Bengals game, Bengals. And second quarter. Quarter. Uh, second, I say, um, last half. Of second quarter, okay? Rob Ivan says he hasn't drank in almost two years. It's a good thing. Me, it's been since. I mean, I start up cocktails, right, but not. A lot. Uh, not since I've been here, um. Not around here. And in Oakland, I had taken up the habit, if I go to the alley or something, I'll have cranberry juice and coffee and water. Uh, maybe, I think the last time I had Irish coffee was last year. Yeah, there you go, okay? No, I don't miss it either. Um, John Akala says, go to the black hole area. No, I mean, I, I, it's nothing against the black hole, but. I'd rather be in the club where I can talk and sit down and vlog and everything, rather than in the mosh, you know? Uh, well. But I can't pay a visit. Yeah, I've always been a, a clubs kinda guy. I've got nothing, look, I got nothing, I love the black hole. That's not the point. That's not the point. I love the black hole. I just love that, I just love, I'm just. I like to luxuriate, man. It's like to hang out, man, have the seat, man, sit back, man, you know? Got the screen over here, the game over there, got talking over here, right, friends over there. You know, I just like to luxuriate, okay? You know? The black hole is cool, man, but you get down there and it's crowded. That's why it's called the black hole, alright? That's cool, it's cool to visit. It's like, it's like, it's cool, it's cool to visit, but you don't wanna live there, okay, for me. Some people like to live there, alright? That's, 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 John, John Protopapas is like that. Famous real estate developer in Oakland, Madison Park Real Estate Investment Trust. Has a lot of great apartments around the city and condominiums. An unsolicited unpaid plug for John. John, big Raiders fan, big season ticket holder, takes his sons to the game, loves the black hole. I remember. We were talking, we went to game years ago and he goes, I, I gotta be down with my peeps. Gotta go with the peeps, okay? It's cracking me up. Anyway, to see, my, my, my peeps are at the club. Sorry. Oh, my lord. Mario's one oh six, row twenty. Mario, I'll come down to say hi to you. How's that? I'll make a strip, I'll make a special trip. Like second half of the game, just to say, hey, Mario, how you doing? How's that? You know, um, Earl says, the Raiders have left twice. This time for good, why still root for them? Hey, that's, you know what? Uh, that's your thing. I, I say this to you. Uh, don't, just live life as you wanna live it. You know, if you don't wanna root for the Raiders, okay? I choose to root for the Raiders. I, I separate that from what some, from. A lot of things, from however the front office has treated me. Even then, I separate that because Mark Bedain has always been nice to me. Uh, so, um, Morris Bradshaw, okay? That's how I look at it. And I have a long history with the organization, so, you know, you. Just don't make stuff like that complicated. You get more, more important things to worry about than that, um. I enjoy rooting for the Raiders. John Akala says, I know violators still goes to the games, but I don't see him as often anymore. Mario says, screaming Raiders in defense for three hours. I, uh, yeah, so I, yeah, I got a lot of stories. And Mario says wine and cheese. You mean me? I don't eat cheese and I don't drink wine, so that kinda takes that out of it. No, I would say coffee? Yeah, you know how that coffee stand, you know that coffee stand is on the west side? That's why I like to, I like to sit near there, okay? I remember JT, the brick, oh, JT, um, I might run into him. JT's probably, I don't know. JT's really gotten into this sort of us versus thing, us versus them Vegas not thing, you know, and I'm like, ah, whatever. I just, JT just made a comment about when LeBron James talking about owners. And didn't want the term used. I understood what he meant and I understand what anybody black means. But JT got on Facebook. And, you know, posted that and, and said, I don't understand this. He was, he was picking a racial fight. He knew what it was. And I thought JT was not that kind of person. And I thought JT was not that kind of person. I really did. So I'm really disappointed with him. I really am. You, you know, that's, that was race baiting at its worst. Though, why do that? Of all the things you can talk about, why do that? I defriended. I was, I was tearfully disappointed in JT the Brick for doing that. He knows what that's all about. He just leave it alone. He didn't need to do that. Anyway, um, Rob Iman says, a lot of Fort Niner fans are sad about the Raiders leaving. I'm sad about there's no rivalry, but hey, you know what? I've got video, I might just repost it with my new tech, but. I've got radio, video from Niner Raider preseason games of the past. Fans did not know how to act, man. Including women. They get drunk, they fight people and all this stuff, whoa, you know? Mario says, I'll be looking forward to shaking your hand. I'll be looking forward to meeting you, Mario. That's a row, section one oh six. Row twenty. I don't make a note of that. Section one oh six, row twenty. Um, I might come down early before the game if I can. Well, I know my, my godparents have a tailgate. I gotta get by there first. Uh, but uh, that's paramount. Otherwise, I will go get killed, okay? Don't wanna do that. Yeah, so, and if anything happens where I can't make the game, you'll, 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 you'll let everybody know. Uh, but right now, hey, I'm going. Um, and I'm excited. So, um. Alright, where are we? One fourteen, alright, yeah, it's one fourteen in the east. Uh, and um, I have got to get to bed. Um, you miss Greg Papa? Yeah, well, here's the thing. He ain't too far away. He's, he's over there playing Bill King across the bay. Mario. Uh, Mario is, uh, let's see here, Mario, 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 Mario. Uh, Mario Romero. Like, hey Mario, any relation to Caesar Ro- Ro- Romero from, you know, Joker fame? Um, Raiders. Cool, alright, got it. Caesar Romero. Caesar Romero, Mario Romero, maybe, I don't know, possibly? Anyway, alright. Live long and prosper, everybody. I'll see ya. Go Raiders. Tomorrow night, um. Since I've gotta catch an early flight, no livestream. No livestream. Sean, you just came here, man. I gotta get going, dude. Uh, how you doing, man? Uh. Yeah, I gotta get going. Sorry, Sean, you, uh, you showed up late. You didn't know though, okay? Um, yeah, but I gotta catch a flight. No livestream tomorrow night. I've gotta catch a flight. I'm going to Raiders game. Are you gonna be at the Raider game, Sean? Possibly? Alright, uh, I guess not, right? Alberto says, I want the Raiders to move back to LA and represent the AFC. They have a huge fan base there. That ain't happening. Anyway, see y'all later. Good night. Take care. See ya.